Welcome to O'Conne County Board of Commissioners Meeting. Today is Tuesday, March the 4th, 2025. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask Chuck Horton to lead us in the pledge. Please stand. First item of business is to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
A motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is any statements or remarks from citizens. This is for anything not on tonight's agenda. Any statements or remarks from commissioners?
Chairman, I have one. I'd like to recognize and thank the visit O'Conne groups Sarah and Joanne and the other various community groups who put on a very successful birthday bash for O'Conne County, 150 years old. And the groups I was looking up, the William Daniel Society, Children of the American Revolution, the Reverend John Andrew Chapter of the Daughters of American Revolution, and of course Sarah and Joanne. So they did a wonderful job and they had some outstanding food trucks there too. I think, didn't they, Mr. Thomas?
Of course it did.
Yes, yes. It was nice to have some barbecue for the change. So, but I want to shout out to them. They did a great job and well attended and look forward to their, to our 200th birthday.
You know, the comments from commissioners. We want to mention that State of the County address is on March 12th at 11:30 at the Civic Center. We do ask that you register. That registration is on the chamber website and registration is open through tomorrow. We'll now move on to approval of minutes. This is for February 4th and February 25th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as distributed.
Motion second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is a Russ Page Day proclamation, and we're going to ask Chuck Horton to read that proclamation for us.
Mr. Chairman, before I read this, I don't know how many of you in the room had a chance over the years to know Russ. But I'll say a few things about him. He was consistent. He loved agriculture and when he went to the podium, that's what you were going to hear was a plug about agriculture in O'Conne County. And he was very sincere. A few times until I got to know what type of vehicle he drove, I would jog on Broadlands Drive and he lived in Victoria Station. If he saw me, he would pull off the road with his truck. Well, I'm no law enforcement guy. My first thing was I gotta find a rock or something because I didn't have a gun. I said, I don't know who this person is and outcomes Russ. So after that I was okay. He just wanted to talk with me. He could get me out. So sometimes we'd talk an hour about something and he just wanted me to know about it, but he, he was certainly a good citizen of this county and he, he loved the county. He wanted to protect agricultural land. And so I think if you didn't know him, you missed a good, good person. Anyway, now I'll read this proclamation. Proclamation, Russ Page Day, March 4th, 2025. Whereas Russ Page has long held a love for animals and farming, including working on a farm at age 11. And whereas Paige is a cattle reproductive physiologist with a doctorate from Rutgers University and completed post-doctorate fellowships at West Virginia University and the University of Pennsylvania. And whereas he moved to O'Conne County in 1981, becoming a citizen, cattle farmer and businessman. And whereas he has shared his expertise as an adjunct professor at the Animal and Dairy Science Department at the University of Georgia. And whereas his love of community and agriculture led to co-founding the O'Conne County Farmers Market and the highly regarded O'Conne County Farmland Protection Program. And whereas through the efforts of the farmland protection program, over 750 acres of farmland in O'Conne County has been preserved in perpetuity from development. And whereas Russ Page has been a tireless advocate for historic preservation and green space. And whereas O'Conne County has been recognized throughout the state for its farmland and green space preservation, which can be directly attributed to his efforts. Now therefore be it resolved that the O'Conne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 4th, 2025 is Russ Page Day in O'Conne County, Georgia, and recognizes him for all his contributions to O'Conne County. O'Conne County Board of Commissioners, signed by Chairman John Daniel.
Russ has moved out of O'Conne County, so he's not here to receive the proclamation. So we're going to take a picture out front with the board and we're going to send that picture as well as this proclamation to him. All right, at this time, we're going to move into hearings and actions on zoning matters. The rezonation petitions shall be presented by the county staff with no time limit. The applicant and those signing up to speak for the petition shall be allowed a total of 20 minutes, less the applicant's reserve for rebuttal. Those signing up to speak against the petition shall also be allowed a total of 20 minutes. After the public comment section, the public comments will be closed and the board will have an opportunity to ask questions. And then the board shall take action as set out in Unified Development Code. With that, we'll move to our first case, which is rezoning request P 24-0036, Epsbridge Center 2 LLC. The request is to modify conditions of previous rezon 6812, 2.494 acres at 6,000 Parkway Boulevard. Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is P 24-0036, Epsbridge Center 2 LLC applicant and owner. This is parcel A 01AT 001OP located at Parkway Boulevard and O'Conne Connector. It's currently zoned B2 in the regional center character area. Again, the request is to change the conditions of the previous zoning case 6812, which is zoned it to B2, to modify previous conditions and the concept plan. The requested changes are number one, amend the concept plan to allow construction of automotive oil change and lubrication shop and a car wash. Number two, to amend the allowed uses on the property to include automotive oil change and lubrication shops, automotive parts, accessories and tire stores, automotive repair and maintenance, except car washes, general automotive repair and car washes. This is a recorded plat you have in your application packet, the concept plan showing the location of the proposed car wash and oil change. These are architectural images submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. Number four, automotive oil change and lubrication shop and a car wash are added to the previous permitted uses of retail banking and restaurants for the outline. And number five, no outdoor storage or display is permitted, including auto parts or tires. The planning commission recommends approval with staff recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Bishop?
Hi, I'm Patrick Bishop, speaking on behalf of Epsbridge Center 2 LLC. We agree with the planning commission's report and I'm available to answer any questions that you all might have.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezon? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll close public comments. Any questions from commissioners? Here none will entertain a motion.
Chairman, I make the motion to approve rezon E 24-0036, Epsbridge Center 2 LLC. Request to modify the conditions of a previous rezon number 6812, 2.494 acres, 6,000 Parkway Boulevard, Marshall with the five conditions.
Second.
There we have a motion and second for approval of rezon request P 24-0036 with five conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is rezoning request P 24-0254, Rhino Mini Storage LLC. The request is to modify the conditions of a previous rezon P 23-0157. This is 8.37 acres at 1052 Morland Heights Strip Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is P 24-0254, Rhino Mini Storage, applicant and owner. This is parcel B 06030C. It's currently zoned OIP in the Civic Center character area. And again, the request is to modify the previously approved rezoning of P 23-0157 to increase the maximum allowed office area from 23,400 square feet to 73,800 square feet. Increase the number of buildings from four to 10 and remove the previously approved assisted living facility from the concept plan. This is a recorded plat you have in your application packet, the concept plan and the architectural images submitted with the application. Staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. Number four, all structures shall be brick or stone on all sides. Number five, total building square footage shall not exceed 73,800 square feet. Number six, the traffic impact statement that meets the requirements UDC as amended through February 3rd, 2025 shall be submitted with the site development plan application for review as the proposed average daily trips have increased or being proposed to increase from 515 of the previous rezon approval to 800 ADT. The planning commission recommended approval subject to the conditions recommended by staff with one additional condition, and that was the developer shall install a four-foot opaque fence along Morland Heights Road. Should the board accept the planning commission's recommendation, planning staff would suggest that the plant, the condition read as follows. The developer shall install a four-foot tall imitation wood vinyl fence in addition to and within the vehicle use screening area along Morland Heights Road. Thank you.
Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Justin Greer, Pittman and Greer Engineering, 1050 Barber Creek Drive. A little history on the project. The property was zoned OBP back in 2006. We came through with a modified rezon in 2021 and changed it from OBP to the assisted living facility, which was 73,000 square feet and then one 20,000 square foot office building. We came back in '23 and modified the office building to three smaller buildings. And now we're looking at modifying it all to the office space. I guess the owner's intent was originally to do the assisted living, but after COVID, kind of the model of assisted living has changed a little bit. Seniors are looking at more independent living rather than in kind of big box stuff. That's something he's ran into. And this site really doesn't work to have those cottage types plus, plus an assisted living facility is just not large enough. So we're here before you this evening. He's also had pretty good interest in, well, he's had the first three buildings or have tentative leases and he's had a lot of interest in more office space for the property. We are going to 10 buildings. It's an overall 73,000 square feet, which is reduction of about 20,000 square feet from the last plan. The only issue I have on the conditions was the last condition. Can you bring that up? Or can you bring up the site plan? So there was some discussion at, at Planning Commission about having the four-foot opaque fence along Morland Road. And after, I didn't want to belabor the discussion that night, so my concern is that they did not want park, you know, cars to have their light shining to the residences across Morland Drive. We are providing the, the fence, I mean, the screening along the parking there. And if you look at those buildings on the interior, they're, the main parking for the fronts of the buildings is, is not facing Morland. It's facing the internal building. Over here. So we have parking lots here and there's parking here. So we anticipate that, I think the fear was at night that there'd be, you know, people parking here primarily shining lights into these houses. I really think that this will probably be the primary parking for these facilities in here, even in theirs. So this is basically overflow parking and I don't anticipate that the use, it'd be an office space would be used late, super late in the evenings. So I mean, I would appreciate that condition struck if possible. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezon? Does anyone wish to speak against? That will close public comment. Any questions from commissioners?
Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Greer as far as the condition number seven. I don't, I can't really tell the elevation as far as where the parking spaces are in relations to the street and, but would, would y'all consider maybe a berm of some sort there instead of a fence to, to mitigate the concerns of the neighbors about headlights?
We could, yes, sir. I could see if we could get it to fit in there. We have about 10 foot. So to get the grades to slope up and have a berm, it won't be very tall. But we may could get maybe a two-foot tall berm in there.
Well, if you, that's just a suggestion. I don't know which would be less intrusive as far as, or as the property owner, as far as either paying for a fence or paying for a berm, I don't know if, which is easier.
It's probably a lot cheaper to pay for the berm and then landscape on top of that. And I think they'd be amenable to that rather than a four-foot tall fence. I think it'll look better without the fence to.
Yeah, yeah, I think I agree. I mean, as far as aesthetics from, from.
Morland.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
If, if my fellow commissioners, I'd like to offer that as an alternative to a fence is a, the berm, which planning staff does something that would work to make sure it does what it is intended to do, and that's to shield the neighbors from any headlights.
Yes, sir. Yeah. And I believe it is, is roughly at grade with the road, if I remember correctly. We don't sit up higher. The parking doesn't sit up higher than the road to my, if I remember correctly.
That's the only comment I have. On my ears, with, with plants or something on top of the berm? Oh, yeah. The normal, yeah, the normal screening of the, but instead of a fence, maybe the berm would be nice.
Any other questions or comments? We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to put forward a motion to approve a rezon E 24-0254 for Rhino Mini Storage LLC. Request to modify the conditions, previous rezon P 23-0157, 8.37 acres of 1052 Morland Heights Road vacant with the six conditions presented by staff along the seventh condition of a berm of sufficient size to accomplish the intent.
I'll second. A motion and a second to approve reasonable request P 24-0254. Six original conditions plus the seventh condition, striking the fence and adding a berm with vegetation.
Yes. Can we clarify that berm height of two feet?
Two feet.
Yes, sir. Please, thank you.
Berm height of two feet with vegetative buffer addition. Very good. All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Our next rezon request is rezon request P 24-0257, 257 LLC. This is a rezon from AG to B2. It's 3.14 acres at 1901 Epsbridge Parkway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, P 24-0257, 7 LLC applicant and owner. This is a portion of parcel C 01V 006. It's currently zoned AG in the regional center character area. And again, the request is a rezon, a portion of a 3.14 acre portion of tax parcel C 01V 006 from AG to B2. This is a recorded plat in your application, the proposed concept plan and the architectural images submitted with the application. Staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. Number four, at least 80% of exterior wall surfaces of all buildings and structures shall either be brick veneer, stone veneer, or glass or combination thereof. Additional primary and accent materials are allowed as indicated in UDC Section 30603. Number five, service areas and dumpsters shall be visually screened from public view by a six-foot masonry wall with facade material matching the exterior of principal structures with black painted metal steel enclosure doors. Enclosure doors made of wood or chain link are prohibited. Planning commission recommends approval subject to the conditions recommended by staff. Thank you.
Mark Campbell?
Good evening. Mark Campbell, Carter Engineering, TN10 Commerce Drive, Bogart, Georgia. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about this project tonight. I really think it's a great opportunity for the applicant for proposed hotel development that you've heard planning staff talk about. It is part of a larger area, a larger partial. This particular portion has frontage on Parkway Boulevard. So that's located between approximately the Hobby Lobby location and the Kohl's location. There's been some other development along that corridor now, but this is still zoned AG, looking for that B2 zoning. It's, it's bounded by an existing stream, so it kind of isolates it from the remaining portion of that larger parcel. It kind of makes sense for, for this to be the first part that is developed with that frontage. Utilizing existing infrastructure in the area that was essentially developed as part of the Parkway Boulevard. And again, a proposed hotel with all the associated facilities there. Happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezon? Does anyone wish to speak against? That will go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from commissioners? Mark, is there access from Jordan Drive back all the way through to Parkway Boulevard?
Not, not for this parcel. This parcel would only be accessed from Parkway Boulevard.
No way Jordan Drive will not have access on to the park.
That's correct. We're not proposing a bridge or anything across the stream.
Any questions? We'll entertain a motion.
Making motion, we approve rezon P 24-0257, Severn LLC, rezoning from AG to B2, 3.14 acres, 1901 Epsbridge Parkway, vacant with the five conditions.
A motion second to approve rezon request P 24-0257 with five conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is variance request P 24-0257. It's DR Horton Incorporated. The request to reduce the side yard setback on .23 acres at 1308 Westland Court.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, variance P 24-0259, DR Horton, applicant and owner. This is parcel A 02D 011E. Currently zoned R1 in the suburban neighborhood character area. And again, it's a special exception variance from the UDC Section 40901 and Table 4.1 to reduce the minimum required side setback from 10 feet to nine feet for an existing single family dwelling. This is the recorded plat you have in your application packet. The concept plan that also is, is, is there recommending or requesting the 9.4 and 9.6 setbacks on the side as opposed to the 10. And this is a site plan from a residential application that showed the 10-foot. Staff recommends conditional approval with our one standard condition. Number two, a variance is granted to reduce the required right side setback from 10 feet to nine feet in the immediate area of the setback encroachment only, as shown on the concept plan and as built survey dated 2/3/2025 by John F. Brewer, RLS, WNA Engineering. Thank you.
Mr. Hicks?
How are you doing? Bryce Hicks, WNA Engineering, 355 Oneida Street, Athens, Georgia. Here to speak about this variance. I wanted to basically go back, Mr. Herron, could you go back to the, the WNA Engineering site plan showing? I just wanted to, can we show the, yeah, the one with both of them there? Yes, I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that while this, the lot in question does slightly encroach into the 10-foot setback, the adjacent house next door was built far off of that setback so that there will be no visual impact. If you're driving down the street, you're not going to see anything that's going to. that's going to look out of the ordinary. So it will have no visual impact there, and this was basically due to a minor surveying error on the initial. Thanks. If you have any questions, please.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the variance request? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll close public comments. Any questions from Commissioners?
Got one. I don't remember your last.
Hicks.
Hicks, okay.
Yes, sir.
Your company built, or your applicant built both houses?
Yes, yes, sir.
Your mistake.
No, sir, it was, we weren't the contractors.
You sound like somebody from DC.
Oh, no, sir.
You did or you didn't?
No, sir, we, they called us in to do a second survey. It was a different firm that did the initial as-built survey that did depict the 10-foot setback, but we went in and did a second survey, which depicted the lot lines as shown, nine point, 9.6 feet and 9.4 feet. And from there, that was where they commissioned us to do a variance request for.
Okay, but your side, whoever's paying you made a mistake.
Yes, sir, there was, there was, it was a mistake made on the initial survey, and then the home itself was permitted. I think it ended up being around 10 inches wider than it was initially permitted. Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
I got a question before you leave, sir. So the two different surveyors that looked at this, did each of you survey from the exact same point?
I don't have that information in front of me. Unfortunately, I am not a surveyor, but our, our survey team did survey from the same points, from, to my knowledge, they did, using the markers that are out in the field, yes.
So my question, I guess, is, is this from the foundation or is this from the eve?
I believe these are from the foundation.
Okay.
Yes.
So the eve would then be encroaching even more into the setback?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
Any other questions? We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve variance P 24-0259 as presented.
We have a motion and second to approve variance request P 24-0259 with two conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is consider the readoption of the official zoning map of Oconee County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is the official zoning map amendment and readoption you have attached to your packets, the copy of the proposed countywide zoning map for amendment and readoption. As part of this action, the board proposes to change all previously approved agritourism sites that were zoned B1 or OIP between the years of 2013 and 2018 to AG agricultural. The current UDC now allows agritourism as a permitted use in the agricultural zoning district, and thus the B1 and OIP zone is no longer required. This is the actual official map that you have in your packets that incorporates those changes, and so that is before you this evening for the amendment and readoption.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
How did we account, and I apologize, I didn't think about this, so I'll look at the agenda. How did we account for number three on the rezons, the AG to B2? Are we showing that on the map?
The AG to B2?
Yeah, the Severn LLC, 3.14 acres. So we're showing it as, on that map, are we showing it as AG or B2?
It would be AG on this map because the action just was taken.
So I, I could see a loop where you wind up not knowing whether that's actually AG or B2. I think as, as an addition to the resolution you have in front of you, a direction to the planning director to make that change to B2 since you rezoned that. Y'all see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Another question. The properties that are affected by going from B1, B2, and OIP to AG.
Yes.
You've had contact with all the property owners and.
Yes, sir, we have.
No problems.
That's right.
Very good, thank you.
I've got another question. As we move forward to his point, do we need to have this as a fluid document so it's at every time that we make a change as commission? This document changes, or is it every time that we adopt it?
We make that change administratively every time you take action.
What you're really, you're doing two things with this. One, you're fixing the agritourism thing, but the second thing you're doing is taking all those changes and being sure that they're all correct on one zoning. But it's almost like you've been striking through in red, and now we're just producing the final document, which we'll have over and over again over the years.
Thank you. Any other questions? We'll entertain a motion.
Thank you. Make a motion we approve the readoption of the official zoning map for Oconee County.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, we did hold a public hearing on that. We do need to ask for public.
Do we have any public comment? Here none will now move to motion.
And before Mark makes it, amendment and readoption. We changed that during the day.
Make a motion we approve the amendment and readoption of the official zoning map for Oconee County.
And that is to include the action taken tonight on Parkway Boulevard. Very good. Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is consider an appointment to the Oconee County Board of Tax Assessors.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Sidney Bell to that position.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is discuss a city or design services contract for Dawson Park. Again, your chairman's got out ahead in front of himself, and he is not ready to intelligently discuss this tonight, so I would like to just postpone this till I get all the questions answered that I got. Any objections?
Thank you.
That's good. Next item is discuss, consider the RFP for health insurance broker services, explore self-funded coverage. We've talked about this for the last strategic planning meeting as well as our last meeting. Basically, we had issued an RFP for this item. We had six proposals received. We did follow our normal process, which includes review by a selection committee. Each member scored. A top scoring firm will be presenting tonight for your consideration. But based on a competitive process, Gallagher Benefit Services at a price not to exceed $141,000. If approved tonight, this was originally intended to start in January, so we're kind of in a limbo for this first quarter. And so if approved, we'll work with Gallagher and the incumbent for a smooth transition for each firm, and then also determine the prorated fees based on that transition. So we'll owe our current broker some funds, and then this 141 will be reduced by whatever time period that comes out to be. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Here none will entertain a motion. It's Gallagher Benefit Services. Gallagher Benefit Services. Price will not exceed 141,000 for the year, first year contract.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to proceed with that as stated, and not to exceed $141,000.
We have a motion and second to award to Gallagher Benefit Services for a contract price not to exceed $141,000 and approval to work with Gallagher and the incumbent provider for a smooth transition and separation of fees there. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Does any Commissioner wish any item to come off the consent agenda? We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make. Sorry.
We need to pull the.
I'm sorry.
Splotz Farm Land Preservation Funding out, but I've been thinking about it. I think we can act on it tonight. I just need to get the board to add one little thing to the approval of that.
Okay, with that, I ask that we pull off number four, and we'll take that separately then. I'll leave three items on the consent agenda. We can get a motion for those three.
I make a motion we approve items one, two, and three on the consent agenda as submitted.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll go to approve the Splotz Farm Land Preservation Funding.
If the motion could simply read, approve the Splotz Farm Land Preservation Funding subject to the approval of the chairman to certain changes in the conservation easement. I'm working with the Athens Land Trust folks, and we've almost got that worked out. We know what we're going to do. They just don't have the final draft yet, but I think if you can delegate to John the approval of that, then I think it's fine to go.
Any questions for Daniel on that one? Anybody wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, but I think I only got to four words.
Yeah.
He'll just indulge me and.
Yes, so motion should be approved, Splotz Farm Land Preservation Funding, contingent upon legal approval and authorizing the chairman to sign the easement.
That'll work.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We do not have need of executive session, so Commissioner Sax.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, we are adjourned.